I'm the chairman of the commission. Before we get started, I've asked Mr. Whedon to please lead us in prayer. This will be followed by the pledge led by Commissioner Dee Oliver. Please stand.
Let us pray. Oh, mercy for God in heaven, we just want to give you thanks, Lord God, for waking us up this morning, Lord, closing our right minds, starting us along the way, Lord, with use of our limbs. Lord, we ask that you bless each person here today, Lord, individually and collectively, Lord God, and we ask that the decisions that are made today, Lord, glorify you, Lord, as we take the victory today, Lord. We ask you to just be with us, Lord, those that are here, those that are on the way, and those who have desired to be here. In Jesus' name, let the people say amen. Amen.
(inaudible)
Thank you, Mr. Whedon, for the prayer and Ms. Oliver for the pledge. I'd next ask Commissioner Phil Russo to please introduce some members.
Thank you, Mr. Hodson. Seated all the way to my right at the end of the diocese is our city attorney, Bill McCauley. Seated next to Bill is Jack Wall. Jack represents the Rose Hall district, and Jack is a civil engineer. Seated next to Jack is Dr. Karen Beardsley-Kwosny. Dr. Karen is a professor of literature and cultural studies, and she represents the Princess Anne district. Next to Dr. Karen is Dee Oliver. Dee is a funeral director, and she is an at-large member of the commission. Next to Dee is Ron Ripley. Ron is in real estate management and development, and he is also an at-large member of the commission. My name is Phil Russo. I'm an attorney, and I'm an at-large member of the commission, and I'm also secretary. As you met, Jeff Hodson is our chairman. He represents the Beach district, and he is in real estate management. Seated next to Jeff, on his left is Bob Thornton. Bob is in commercial real estate sales, leasing and development. He is vice chairman of the commission, and he represents the Lynn Haven district. Next to Bob is Jan Rosensky. Jan is a property manager, and she represents the Centerville district. Next to Jan, on her left is Mike Inman. Mike is an attorney. He is an at-large member of the commission. Next to Mike is David Weiner. David is in commercial sales, and he represents the Kempsville district. Next to David is Ross Brockwell. Ross is a structural engineer, and he represents Bayside district. And then, last but not least, is the interim director of planning, Barry Frankenfield. Barry, if you would, introduce your staff who are present.
All right, am I on here? All right. Hey, I want to welcome back Bill McCauley. We missed you, buddy, so we're glad you're back.[213.81][213.81](applause) Kay did a great job.
As always.
And so, you know, in Virginia Beach, fall color is sometimes not as vibrant as usual, but thankfully, we have Ed Whedon today to bring us up with some bright fall color, who's a great assistant. On the planning bench, we have Jimmy McNamara, Christine Gaye, Kevin Kemp. In the back row, we have Karen Lasly, Stephen White, and our city attorney, Kay Wilson. So, thank you very much, everybody.
Thanks, Barry. Thanks, Phil. The next order of business is the explanation of the rules we use to govern the meeting. Commissioner Jan Rosensky will now explain these rules.
Thank you, Chairman Hodson. Virginia Beach Planning Commission takes pride in being fair and courteous to all parties in attendance. It is important that all involved understand how the commission normally conducts its meeting. It's equally important that everyone treat each other and members of the commission with respect and civility. The commission requests that if you have a cellphone, to please turn it off or silence it at this time. This is an abbreviated explanation of the rules. A complete set of the rules is located in the front of the planning commission agenda for today. Following is the order of business for this public hearing. Withdrawals and deferrals. The chairman will ask if there are any requests for withdrawal or deferral on any item on the agenda. Consideration of these requests will be made first. Consent agenda. The second order of business is the consideration of the consent agenda, which are those items which the planning commission believes are unopposed and which have favorable staff recommendation. Regular agenda. The commission will then proceed with the remaining items on the agenda. Please note that actions taken by the commission today are in the form of a recommendation to the Virginia Beach City Council. The final decision for approval or disapproval of an application will be made by city council. The commission thanks you for your attendance. We hope that your experience here today leaves you feeling that you've been heard and treated fairly. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. The first order of business is to address those items to be withdrawn or deferred. Please come forward if you have an item to be either withdrawn or deferred. It's been brought to my attention that Agenda Item Number One is requesting a deferral. Is there any objection to this item being deferred? It's also been brought to my attention that Agenda Item Number Eight is requesting deferral. Mr. Burdon?
Yeah, I represent the applicants on Agenda Item Number Eight, and we do request a deferral. We hope to be back next month, but we can do it indefinitely because we're not sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any objection to this item being deferred? It has also been brought to my attention that Agenda Item D2 is requesting a deferral. Is there any opposition to this being deferred? Do I have a motion on the deferred items?
I'll make a motion that Items Number One, Eight, and D2 be deferred.
Motion made by Jan Rosensky. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner David Weiner. Mr. Whedon, we're ready to vote.
Vote is open. I have over eleven to zero. The commission has deferred Items One, Eight, and D2.
Thank you. The next items we'll address are those to be placed on our consent agenda. The vice chair will now handle this portion of our agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This afternoon, we have seven items on the consent agenda. The first item is Item Number Two. This is an application of a modification of proffers to a conditional use permit. Rezoning approved this in 2013. This is from Reed Enterprises. The property is located on the west side of Holland Road, 450 feet south of Dam Neck Road, and it is in the Princess Anne district.
Thank you, Mr. Thornton, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, for the record, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach attorney, representing Reed Enterprises, Inc. We appreciate this item being on the consent agenda. It's a proffered item. The conditions of the use permit are unchanged from the prior approval, but they're all obviously acceptable to my client. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any opposition to this matter being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the chair has asked Commissioner Brockwell to read this matter into the record.
Thanks, Bob. This application is for an automobile service station at a property adjacent to an existing service station that's been there about 10 years. The applicant is that owner, and as Mr. Thornton said, it was previously approved. The only modification is a change to the layout of the site plan. There is a stormwater management pond that was shown previously in the easement for Dominion Power, and Dominion Power has since changed their policy to not allow stormwater ponds in their easements. I think the rationale involves underground utility lines. So, all this modification does is just flip the geometry of the site layout. So, since there's no changes to what was previously approved, we put it on the consent agenda.
Thank you. The next item is Item Number Three. This is an application by Richard Boucher, trading as Excellent Professional Paint Service and GHS LLC, the owner. It's a conditional use permit for auto repair garage at 3413 Chandler Creek Road in Suites 120, 121. It's in Council District Rose Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, again, for the record, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach attorney, representing the applicant. The applicant and his spouse are here today. We greatly appreciate being on the consent agenda. All five conditions as recommended by your staff are acceptable to the applicant.
Thank you. Is there any opposition to this matter being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the chair has asked Commissioner Inman to read this matter into the record. I'm sorry. Commissioner Wall. Got ahead of myself.
Thank you. This application is for a conditional use permit for automobile repair garage. The site is part of a 33-acre industrial park that was rezoned from residential to light industrial in 2001. Due to the existence of a restrictive acreage easement, uses of the property are limited to agriculture, industry, and outdoor recreation. The 2001 proffer agreement restricts the uses to warehouse and light industrial operations. The applicant requests a conditional use permit for an automobile repair garage for custom body restoration, all which will occur inside the two suites. According to the application, no collision work or engine repair is proposed, but rather high-end specialty body and paint work. Clients are arranged by appointments only. It appears that this application is compatible, or this Agenda Item is compatible with surrounding land uses, and there's very little impact on existing businesses on the property and on adjacent parcels. The staff recommends approval. The applicant agrees with the conditions, and there's no opposition. For these reasons, we have placed the item on the consent agenda.
Thank you. The next item is Item Number Four. This is RNR of Virginia. The applicant, the Randolph Row Trust, is the owner. This is a conditional use permit for automobile repair garage at 623 First Colonial Road, Council District Beach.
Good afternoon, Mr. Vice Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Jonathan Rose. I own and operate of RNR of Virginia. We are pleased to be on your consent agenda, and we are fine with all the conditions that have been put before us.
Thank you, sir.
We appreciate you working with the applicant this morning, too.
Absolutely. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Is there any objection to this matter being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the chair has asked Commissioner Inman to review this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Thornton. This is a conditional use permit for automotive repair garage, and the site is already developed with a single-story, 6,200-square-foot building. The front of this building was previously used as an office and the rear as a commercial garage with four overhead doors for vehicular access located on the southern facade. There is mature vegetation between the building and the northern property line. On-site surface parking is to the east, west, and south of the building, and vehicles can easily directly access First Colonial Road from the property. So, this is in the Hilltop Strategic Growth area, which, under that plan, would call for something different on that particular site. However, the plan has not developed far enough yet for us to recommend against such an application. So, the staff recommends that it's still consistent with what's going on in the immediate area. The zoning ordinance requires one parking space for every 250 square feet retail area and one space for every 900 square feet of repair area, and this proposal meets the requirement by providing 26 parking spaces. So, there are several conditions. There were, as of this morning, six conditions. Now, there are eight conditions in order to make this use more compatible with neighboring properties. A couple were added this morning. It is, but one that was already there is that this is a use permit will be only for 10 years in order to allow for development of the SGA plan, and the added conditions are the applicant will work with the adjacent church to the south to retain the existing shared access aisle as long as possible, and tires should not be installed between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 1:00 p.m. on Sundays.
The next item on the consent agenda is Item Number Six. This is an application of Radman Radiological Corp. and John Moller, the owner. It's a conditional use permit application for home occupation located at 2353 Fenwick Way. It's Council District Princess Anne. Afternoon.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is John Moller, and I'm the owner of Radman Radiological, and I appreciate greatly your consideration, and I agree with all your conditions.
Thank you. I stand by, but I think we're good. Any opposition to this matter being placed on the consent agenda? You may be seated.
Thank you.
Hearing none, the chair has asked Commissioner Rosensky to read this matter into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Thornton. The applicant requests this conditional use permit to allow an office use within a single-family dwelling in Princess Anne quarter neighborhood. The applicant owns Radiology, which is x-ray supply and equipment company. According to the application, the administrative office for Radman Radiology Corp. are within this residence. There's one non-family member that regularly works on the site, typically from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., seven days a week. Based on that, a conditional use permit for home occupation is required in order for the employee to continue working in the home. There are no proposed changes to the structure or to the site of the property. There is sufficient parking for this one employee. There are not any changes that will be made, and therefore, staff has requested that it be approved with the conditions. The conditions are acceptable with the applicant, which includes no deliveries to the property with tractor-trailer, which was a concern for the neighbors. Based on this information, we have placed it on the consent agenda.
Thank you. The next item is Item Number Seven. This is an application from Mr. Donald Kessel. He's the applicant and the owner. This is a subdivision variance. The address is 5001 Blackwater Road, and it's located in Princess Anne district.
Again, for the record, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach attorney, representing Mr. Kessel, and both conditions are acceptable. We appreciate it placing this item on the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any opposition to this matter being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the chair has asked Commissioner Kwosny to read this into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Thornton. This is a request for a subdivision variance to Section 4.4 of the subdivision ordinance, which requires that lots meet all the requirements of the zoning ordinance. The 35,000-plus-square-foot lot was created by a deed of bargain and sale on February 18, 1959. In 1959, the lot was zoned agricultural unrestricted district, which had no minimum dimensional requirements. Currently, the site is zoned Ag-2 agricultural district, which requires a minimum lot area of 43,560 feet. The comprehensive plan designates the subject property as being located within the rural area. The subject lot was created by deed in 1959. However, as commonly occurred in the 1950s and 60s, a plat was never recorded. This subdivision variance will rectify the oversight and allow the lot to be legally recorded by plat. The site has contained a single-family dwelling for the past 56 years, and no changes will be made to the land use. In this request, the subject lot will remain the same in size and number of dwelling units and is compatible with the rural character of the surrounding area. Based on the considerations given in the staff report, the planning commission believes there will be no adverse impacts on the adjacent properties and recommends approval of this request with the conditions in the report.
Thank you. The next item is Item Number Nine. This is an applicant, application rather, by Mr. Kevin Jamison, Mission Enterprises, LLC. This is a conditional use permit application for an eating and drinking establishment at 501 Virginia Beach Boulevard in the Beach district. Is no one here to speak on the matter? Any objection to this matter being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the chair has asked Commissioner Oliver to read this into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Thornton. This application recently, well, this applicant just recently opened a restaurant on the subject site and would like to offer bottled local beer and wine as part of their menu. The site is zoned OR Oceanfront Resort for Section 539 of the Oceanfront Resort District Form-Based Code. When a restaurant serves alcohol and is located within 100 feet of a protected district, a conditional use permit for an eating and drinking establishment is required. The Form-Based Code identifies apartment and residential zoning districts that are adjacent to the Ocean Resort District as protected districts. Since the restaurant will serve alcohol beverages and is located within 100 feet of the property zoned A12 apartment district, a conditional use permit is required. The applicant's restaurant, Commune, recently opened but does not include beer or wine on their menu. Commune mainly sells breakfast and lunch. The applicant is considering opening the restaurant in the evenings for specific group reservations. These reservations will not take place after midnight. The restaurant right now occupies 2,000 square feet on the northeast portion of this building and is not proposing to make any improvements to the exterior facade or site in conjunction with this application. Over the past year, the property owner has made a substantial improvement to the 28,000-square-foot site, as well as the existing 9,000-square-foot building. These improvements include a beautiful landscape buffer along the southern portion of the property line, a garden in the southwest portion of the site, a retaining on-site parking, structural and aesthetic improvements to the building, and a custom-designed fencing. Additionally, in November of 2014, this building was placed on the Virginia Beach Historical Register. The subject requested, request for a conditional use permit for an eating and drinking establishment to allow the sale of local wine and bottled beer is part of a quality restaurant and is consistent with the intent of the shopping two-street frontage and the development of the resort area strategic plan. The staff is recommending approval for this application, and therefore, we have placed it on the consent agenda.
Thank you. The last item on the consent agenda is Item D1. This is an application by MGP Retail Consulting, LLC, and Mark IV Investments, Inc., a change in zoning from Ag-2 to conditional B2 community business. It's in the Princess Anne Council District.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Here on behalf of MGP Retail, I'm David Dahlman with Kimley Horn, the civil engineer, representing the applicant. First, I want to say thank you to city staff, planning, and city attorneys for helping put together a successful application. We have reviewed the proffers and have no issue with the proffers and our client consent offer.
Thank you. Is there any opposition to this matter being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the chair has asked Commissioner Kwosny to read this into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Thornton. This is a request for a change of zoning, Ag-2 agricultural 2 district to conditional B2 district. The applicant proposes to consolidate six parcels for the purpose of developing the subject site with a grocery store. The requested change of zoning from Ag-2 agricultural district to conditional B2 community business district is necessary to accommodate the proposed use of this grocery store. A majority of the subject site is undeveloped wooded area. However, there are two small, single-family dwellings on the site that will be removed. Over the past 30 years, a majority of the property within the general booth corridor where this subject site is located have transitioned from agricultural to commercial and residential uses. The subject site is one of the few agriculturally-zoned parcels that remain in the corridor. A description of the proposed development and its consistency with comprehensive plan land use policies and retail design guidelines is provided in the staff report. The comprehensive plan identifies this site as being located within the suburban area. The proposal will rezone one of the few agriculturally-zoned properties, as I said, that remains along the general booth Boulevard corridor. The proposed commercial development is consistent with the character of the surrounding area, as much of General Booth Boulevard has transitioned over the years from agricultural to commercial. The comprehensive plan's guidelines for suburban areas address both the site and the building design. The proposed development provides a quality site and building design that are generally consistent with both the comprehensive plan's land use policies for the suburban area and the zoning ordinance's retail design guidelines. The site design includes a significant landscape buffer along both rights of ways, as well as the property lines adjacent to residential properties, and the building is situated at a location that is conscientious to the adjacent residential properties. Access to the site is provided from Edison Road rather than General Booth Boulevard. No access is requested on General Booth Boulevard, and improvements include the installation of a right-turn lane on General Booth Boulevard, which will make access to Edison Road much easier, dedication and improvement of Edison Road, and a connection to the existing out parcel service road behind the commercial center to the north of Edison Road. Because of these improvements and the benefits of this particular application, the PC recommends approval as proffered.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, that was the last item on the consent agenda. I would like to move that Items Two, Three, Four, Six, Seven, Nine, and D1 be approved.
Motion made by Vice Chairman Thornton. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second made by Commissioner Jan Rosensky. Mr. Whedon, we're ready to vote.
Mr. Chairman, I need to abstain on Agenda Item Number Six, since I represent the applicant.
And I have to abstain on Three, Four, and D1. Our firm is involved in those transactions.
All right, Mr. Whedon.
I have over eleven to zero. The commission has approved Items Two, Three, Four, Six, Seven, Nine, and D1. Any abstentions, so noted.
Thank you. I'd like to thank all the applicants who had a matter on today's consent agenda for attending today's hearing. We will now schedule these items for hearing on city council agenda. The remaining matter, I think we just have one, will now start the discussion, and Mr. Russo, if you'd please call the first item.
The first item on the agenda is Application Number Five, an application of Lena Mercer for a subdivision variance to Section 4.4B on property located at 1408 Milldam Road, District Five, Lynn Haven.
Mr. Burdon.
For the record, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach attorney, representing Ms. Mercer. Ms. Smith did an excellent job of the informal, but I'll try to fill in some of the bigger-picture items. The, Ms. Mercer is the owner of this parcel that is shown here, outlined as such. That piece of property, the amoeba with frontage on Milldam Road and on Palmetto Avenue, contains two and a half, over two and a half acres of land, of which, an acre, a little above, but an acre of land is high land. And understand that the wetland delineation you see on one of the exhibits down along here, that's at basically the two-foot contour, steep slope coming up. The houses that are going to be built on the property as a whole are all built up here in the 12, 13, 14, and 15-foot elevations, and nothing in the floodplain. And frankly, it's not like in the southern part of the city where wetlands can move around. The height of this property, these wetlands, where the wetland delineation line is, is not moving to any extent. This piece of property is being combined with these other two parcels and a new subdivision put to record. When Ms. Mercer bought all this property, the intent was to develop five lots. The property has 57,000-plus square feet of high land, and, you know, all this road frontage, as well as the road frontage on Palmetto. In working through the Bay Act and the Bay Board and with the buffer to keep everything out of the 50-foot seaward buffer, these lots are being vacated, and the homes are all on conforming lots, and they're all out of the 50-foot buffer. And we're down to four as opposed to five, which prior to the Bay Act, this would have been five. It's all zoned R-10, and all the lots that are in the subdivision meet and exceed the R-10 zoning. The one variance that we're here for, and it wasn't discovered until afterwards, the one lot, Lot One, that uses Palmetto Avenue as its access, the other lots all come off of Milldam Road. That Lot One contains one point, almost 1.2 acres of land. It contains over 17,000 square feet of high land, and it has, at the setback, a width of over 200 feet. However, an 80 feet is all that's required. However, because the section out here is wetlands, it doesn't count as frontage. So, we're, the variance we've asked for is for the lot frontage to be the frontage that has always existed on Palmetto for one home, and that's 69.5 feet. The home, and that's at the 30-foot setback, the home will be built back here, shown on the plans, and if you want to pull the... the plans, and if you want to pull the plan up, the home will be, hard to see, the home will be in this area here, yeah, that, well over 80 feet back, 10 feet from the neighboring property line from Palmetto. And that's the only driveway and the only home with access to Palmetto. And this is, all the frontage is the same frontage the property has, and the frontage is actually measured all the way over here, and if, but this is the demarcation line for the wetlands, and that's the only reason this variance is before you. All the other lots, all access from Milldam, they all meet all the requirements of the zoning ordinance. There's no variance, there's no variances for the placement of any homes to be closer than any setbacks. They all conform in every manner, shape, and form, and they all stay out of the 50-foot C-word portion of the buffer. And understand, not that this is the Bay Board, the Bay Board understands, the water is a canal that's way out here. With all of these acres of existing natural buffer, none of it touched. And so that's, that's where we are, an application that's extremely sensitive to the environment, that's by one lot and one home, less than the density that would have occurred prior to the Bay Act. These homes will be half-million-dollar and up homes, and the staff's recommendation for approval is spot-on, and the conditions as recommended are acceptable to the applicant. Be happy to answer any questions that anybody may have.
Any questions for Mr. Burdon? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Our next speaker in support is Brad Martin.
Questions, hold them. Ask me to answer any questions.
Our first speaker in opposition is Patricia Jackson.
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Good afternoon.
I have a concern. My mom lives at 1416 Milldam, and I just have a concern for the street coming through there, well, not a street, but a driveway coming through there, which is right next to her bedroom, and the excess on Palmetto with traffic coming in there. There are kids that play down there, and it's just, it's been a quiet street. We've already been impacted by people who built across the street, parking in Palmetto, and another house in there is just going to make the situation worse in the cul-de-sac of Palmetto. I just have a big concern for that.
And your mother's house, is the one on the corner of Palmetto and Milldam?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Jackson? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Don Jackson.
Good afternoon, Commissioner.
Good afternoon.
Okay, yeah, I'm the son-in-law. My mother-in-law is 96 years old.
Just speak your name for the record, please. Speak your name for the record.
Oh, Don Jackson. Yes, I'm the son-in-law of Ms. Basset Ferby. I guess we do have a pointer. Yes. Yeah, her house is from here on up to this area. So my main concern is, I understand there is a driveway that's coming adjacent to her house. This is the side where her bedroom is. Is there going to be enough easement there that, that they can build like, let's say, a 10-foot buffer, or they have access to go all the way up to their property line? That's one of my concerns there. Are they going to put a retainer wall there? Is this going to be for just that particular house driveway or for any other persons coming into the neighborhood? And then back here on this Palmetto, although this might be her property, but I would love to be able to get with the engineers or the developers to make sure they do not encroach on, into my mother-in-law's property. We're going to, ourselves, try to find out if we can develop later on ourselves, so I don't know if I would have to be back here to contest what these people have done so far, or can we all get along in developing each other's property? That's about all I have.
Ms. Smith? Can you address his question about the setback of the house before? The, in relation to the driveway, the existing property is, I believe, is your mother-in-law's?
Yes.
Can you estimate the distance from the driveway to the house?
I'm not sure that I have a survey that shows the existing house on that lot. Let me ask the applicant's engineer. They, they did not access the, his mother-in-law's property, so they don't have information on where her home is located.
Okay.
So I couldn't tell you the distance, but it appears from the concept plan that at least the area where the driveway could be located is immediately adjacent to that property line.
Okay. I believe one of your questions was, would this driveway just be serving that one single-family house? And I'm pretty certain the answer to that is yes, it would just be that one, the one house that this driveway would serve.
Okay.
And then your other question about accessing off of Palmetto, I'm sure, I mean, they won't be able to encroach on your, your mother's property back there for their development. They, they would not have that ability.
Okay, I think one of the other persons is going to bring up an idea which I thought was a pretty neat idea as well, but you would probably have to go into the 50-foot buffer over here that if you built a driveway that could circle around the back area, you could service all the homes, if that's a proposal they might consider.
Excuse me, are there any, any questions for Mr. Jackson? Thanks, sir.
Our next speaker in opposition is Leroy Dozier.
Hello, Dozier.
Dozier.
Good afternoon. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Leroy Dozier. My father-in-law owns the property at 14, 1421 Palmetto Avenue, which if I can, which is actually directly across as this property here. Now, my main concern, and I was the person that brought that up and brought it to the other person's attention, is that instead of actually having an entranceway here, is there any way we can come off of Milldam and service these lots for that property? Since technically, they're not going to disturb the wetland, but throughout construction and everything else, they're going to be all through the wetlands. They're, they're going to be all up in this area, whether you have a 50-foot buffer or not. The 50-foot buffer is probably what they'll use to actually bring in the equipment and everything they need for those properties to build those houses. So while they're already back in this area, building these houses on these lots, is there any way they can come off of Milldam to service these areas? That's my question.
And I don't think we're going to have an answer for that question.
But that's, that's my main concern, because it is a quiet street, and there's a lot of children that do play on that street and directly in the street. And because of that, it's one of those quiet neighborhoods where kids can actually do that. It's safe enough for these children to be out there, and nobody's flying down the street to get to their house or get away from work or whatever. So that is a very big concern of ours.
Mr. Ripley.
I, I think it'll be good to have the engineer speak to your, to your question, Mr. Martin, but it's been my experience that you won't touch those wetlands, and you touch them and you're in really big trouble, so I think he can explain that to you a little clearer, but.
That'd be great.
Yeah. I don't think you're going to be able to do that.
Okay. Mr. Thornton.
Also, I assume you've looked at the plan. There's only one lot going to be added to that street.
Yes, sir.
The others are all going to enter into it from their own private driveway off of Milldam, so to add one lot to Palmetto ought not to radically increase traffic in there. I appreciate the concern of the kids and so forth, but one house may be four trips a day unless a whole lot of people live there.
That's possibly true, but at the same time, I don't think it would take that much to build, like I said, just to build a street or a right-of-way off of Milldam that would service those houses.
Sounds like a good idea, but I think Mr. Ripley's right. To encroach on the wetlands is, is a very difficult, and our staff person, Carolyn Smith, this morning alluded to it, that it was just, it's, it's all, it's not impossible, but it's extremely difficult. Yeah, you've got to get another body in the city government to approve it, and there has to be mitigation, and it's just not what the environmental folks want to see.
Mr. Ripley.
Just, it seems to be a real large buffer in the backyard of your mother-in-law's house?
Oh, not my mother-in-law, his mother-in-law. My father's house, my father-in-law's house is across the street, yeah.
Yeah, you're across the street, I'm sorry. Is there any intention of taking that buffer down? Because it looks like to me the entrance at the end of Palma, if, it, it looks like it'll be well buffered. I mean, I don't see where she would see that. I mean, I understand traffic going down the road, but it's a public road.
It is a public road.
You know? And so your father-in-law goes down there all the time, I'm sure.
Yeah, he walks out there a lot in the street.
But is there any intention to take that buffer down? I would think it would be well buffered, it looks to me. I may be wrong, but that's the way it appears to me.
But it's just an idea, and that's why we're opposed to it. Just wanted to share his thoughts on that.
Any other questions? Mr. Weiner.
Mr. Dozier, just, just, from what my understanding was this morning, lots 1, 2, and 3, they can be built by right. They don't, nobody even has to come in front of us. So Lot 4, is that correct?
It's Lot 1 that we're.
Right, Lot 1, I'm sorry, 2, 3, and 4. Lot 1 is the only one that's really in front of us to, to look at that, so I don't think they're going to want to put the driveway around that. But this is my thought. Listen to Mr. Martin, and he'll explain that.
Any other questions for Mr. Dozier? Thank you, sir.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Stephen was kind enough to scale off our GIS, and it appears that the existing home at the corner of Palmetto and Milldam is 11 feet off of that property line.
Okay.
Yeah. Pretty close.
Thank you for looking into that.
Our last speaker is Horace Waters.
My name is Horace Waters. I live on 1429 Palmetto Avenue. I am a retired Navy. I've been in this area since 1979, walking, hitchhiking, all the way down Great Neck, West Great Neck, all the way to Oceana. And what brought me to this property that I reside in right now is the scenery. I'm a country boy, and I like the trees, and I like the, I like the waterway. When I first got there, it was water that you could see. And I beg the difference where, where someone said that the, the house hasn't been reseeded. Actually, I got a, my neighbor had, had sent a letter to y'all, also, I handed out to you. Around the corner of Palmetto, I understand that the driveway is going to be, it comes, going to come to Palmetto. I understand that in 1980, that the city had built that for a reason, made that cul-de-sac, the cul-de-sac, which I appreciate, because that's what brought me to the area, brought me to that site. And with the trees and the environment, the trees is up there, I'm scared, it's a threat to us. If you build that driveway through there, you're going to have to touch the trees, you're going to have to touch the roots. And I noticed when the councilor had drove by the truck about a week ago, I was outside, they didn't get out the truck, which I'm sure they really want to go into the, go into the woods, but when you go out there, it's a deep ravine where the water has been saving our community. It takes the water, when a high floods, it takes it out. If you build a, that driveway, water's going to come down in Palmetto. It's going to create more flooding, more hazard to the cars backing out. And with the long driveway, we experienced it across, off on Milldam. It's where cars are coming, it's a public street, that's, I understand it's a public street. When you create that, is, we have three houses that's going to be built, four. We're going to have family members coming Thanksgiving, Christmas, and they're going to, they're going to walk across, or they're going to walk around, and they're going to, they're going to flood the streets, whether it's bad weather, whatever, it's going to happen, which I don't have no qualms for that. But I have qualms about the, the trees. The area blocks our house. The tree blocks the wind, it helps us with the flooding, and if we have a, that, that road coming down, the water's going to run right off. And I think the lawyer was saying that, that it hasn't been no reseeding. The house has been moving all the way around Palmetto. My neighbors' houses have been sinking, whether it's because of the wetlands or what, but we have proof. The man that sent that letter to you had to build a ballcase within, living there within three years. He said he paid $10,000 to have that, he paid $10,000 to have that built to stop his home from sliding. I've been there since 91. My home is still settling. So I beg the difference when it says nothing's happening in the ravine over there, in the wetlands. So I'm proof. If you want to research it again, it's, you know, I, I, I give you the opportunity, but I'm just saying as, as a resident of Palmetto, there is, there is action that's going on with, with the houses falling or lowering. New houses, he's saying it's 10-foot up, it's, it's above, well, it could be true. But I see down the road, with this, with the climate change coming, with that wetland, we, we have no, we can't backtrack no more. Once them houses there, the house is there. So I would, I'm asking the city council to, to really look at the requirements to do a subdivision and stay close to restriction and the laws to protect the residents on Palmetto. Now, of course, you start with five, you go to four. And with the architects, of course, you know, trying to, to put five houses in there was probably already off the chart. Squeezing another one from 69 to 80, 80-foot, you have a reason for you, for 80, 80 feet than 69. You have a requirement, and thus, the resident of Palmetto would like for you to stick close to that rule. That's the only thing, protect us. Far as the wetlands, Chesapeake Bay Act that did their survey, and it said it's, it's okay right now. But when I moved there in 91, you wouldn't even think about building, not even two houses over there. So it done reseeded, it done changed, but nothing is stopping that water or, or other stuff to happen. And so I'm just, just asking y'all to be considerate and look at the, look at the positives and the negatives to putting, that's just that one driveway. It don't seem much, but it could be, it could be more than what we anticipate. And after it done, it's done. So like I said, that's, that's what I have, and I just hope that y'all take consideration in the residents and protect us from, from the environment and this, this change.
Are there any questions for Mr. Waters? Thank you, sir.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
There are no other speakers in opposition.
Mr. Burdon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, let me, I want to thank Mr. Waters for his service to our country, and appreciate Mr. and Mrs. Jackson coming down, as well as Mr. Dozier and their, and their comments. Let me again talk just a little bit about what the variance is. Variance is for one lot that is, again, close to, it's about 180% of the size requirement of highland, and it's 10 times the overall size. And this is the frontage after the taking of this property for this road. This is the frontage that the property has, and it is not being diminished in any way. And the trees, if you, if you can go back to the plan, Kevin, the, we can't touch, you know, anywhere, this red line, we cannot touch other than where we're building. We can go 10 feet from the building footprint, but out here with the driveway will be right off here, with, nothing over here will be. off here, with, nothing over here will be touched. All these trees that are along the property's frontage, which is well over 85% of the frontage going back, none of that can be touched. The, the idea, you know, the Bay, the Bay Act precludes us from putting any kind of a driveway in here without the Bay Board's approval, and theoretically, you could do that, but then you are doing damage to the most important part of the upland buffer from, there's a lot of other buffer here, but again, the, a road, putting in any kind of a road is just gonna add more impervious surface, which is taboo under the Bay Act, and pushes the impervious surface, the development pads, out into the 50-foot C-word buffer, which is, you know, to be able to do that on a development such as this is a very, you know, positive aspect, and that's why the, the staff and the Bay Board approved this. So again, all we're talking about is this one lot, and the frontage exceeds, it's, it's the entire frontage, and it is well over 200 feet, but it's just because this line, which from the street, you don't know, you know, this is, this is wet, because it's all treed, heavily treed. So the visibility, the, as Mr. Ripley said, the home is up here, 11 feet from this property line, nothing anywhere close to what's going on here. And this is, these are all, you know, again, by right homes that meet every requirement, as this does, of the zoning ordinance with the, again, one exception. Now, with regard to Jackson's mother, mother-in-law, we certainly can plant a row of evergreens between, on our property, between the driveway and the boundary line that is shared by their mother, mother-in-law's home. That's, that's something we certainly can do, but again, what the Bay, the reason we've done this is because the Bay Board, the Bay Act pushes as much as you can, everything you can out of this buffer, rather than bring a driveway in over here to serve this piece of property. The other thing I'll point out is that, that my view, my, and only my view, but I'd rather have the driveway buffered and for one house only, being, you know, 12, 15 feet away from the house, rather than having a house 10 feet away, which is where the setback is. I mean, you could put this house 10 feet off of the property line, which is a bigger imposition to someone who's been living here with no one close to her for years, than to have the house over here more than like 20 feet away, and just a driveway with a row of evergreens between it and the house. And that's, that is something that I, I think is a better, better way to, to handle that concern. Drainage, there's no, no chance, all the, these houses are all set 12 feet elevation, existing natural elevation, which is five feet above the flood elevation, and we're doing nothing, and will not be able to do anything to inhibit the existing drainage, which does flow into that large expanse of upland, wetland, before it ever gets to the canal that's back there between this property and the Bay Cliff community. I think I've addressed the questions that were brought up with the issues, but if I've forgotten any, I appreciate y'all bringing them up to me so I can address them.
Any questions for Mr. Burdon? Thank you. Sir, I'm sorry.
Yeah, there is one. We, we cannot, during construction, and I think I did, Brad, I did, I thought I addressed it, maybe I didn't, we cannot do any activity in that 50-foot buffer, the 50-foot upland buffer, before you get to the, this area from the red to the blue. We are not allowed to be in here at all, other than we have to remove the existing, the portion of the existing home that is encroaching into that buffer, that's been there for, you know, decades and decades. But all the trees that are out in this area, we can't touch, and we can't get into that area. And, and as Mr. Ripley completely accurately described, you know, there'd be show causes, there'd be thousands of dollars in fines, you know, none of that can, can take place. So that's, I appreciate the concern, but that's the whole purpose of the way this has been designed, is to leave that area intact and undisturbed.
Any questions for Mr. Burdon? Thanks, sir. Any other speakers?
There are no other speakers.
We'll now close the public hearing and open it up. Mr. Burdon, he actually has the, the last rebuttal, sir.
I was asking permission for one minute, Mr. I forgot to mention something. I was just asking for one minute.
Sure. Mr. Burdon?
Thank you, Mr. Burdon. From, from reading the information of what we, what requirements that requires a subdivision to be built is the, is the hardship. We, we talked, I heard it talked about, mentioned early today, was the hardship. Is there a reason, the hardship that they, they presenting for this? I, I would like for y'all taking consideration of the hardship that they are asking for the, the extra 69 to 80, if it's opposed, please. I forgot to mention that. I would like to, that would be one of the hard core reasons, a hardship.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Burdon, would you like to comment on?
As, as your staff has correctly and appropriately indicated, the hardship has to do with the creation of the cul-de-sac, when it was, when the city came in and took the property off of this property, which is, is the frontage. That pushed the right-of-way closer to the area that is, you know, wetlands, and that's what's created, if, if the road was as it was originally platted, there was, you know, ample frontage measured as it was originally platted. It's the taking that created this cul-de-sac that then took this area that is technically not considered to be frontage, because it is wetlands, off the, you know, the table. And so, again, getting a variance for a lot that has all the frontage it's had for, you know, 50 years, and that meets it in every way visually, is, you know, that's, that's the hardship, and the relief is, is certainly not a unusual relief whatsoever, and it won't be detrimental to, to the community, and it won't set a dangerous precedent for anybody, because it's 200 feet of frontage, that's the bottom line, if, if you measure it the way it's supposed to be measured, but it would have been 80 feet before the taking took place to create the cul-de-sac way back way, because then it was a straight line, you just measured back 30 feet, and there wasn't any wetlands there.
Thank you. All right, we're now closing the public hearing and opening up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Anybody like to comment on this? Mr. Enman?
Well, all things considered, I, I understand the concerns of, of the neighbors and the ideas they put forth are creative, in terms of traffic control and such, but, you know, we are looking at a situation where these three houses can be built now, they're adding a fourth, and that lot, as Mr. Burdon just pointed out, a hardship was created for that, for that lot by the introduction of the cul-de-sac. We're only talking about 10 feet here. It, all the lots will exceed the minimum lot area of 10,000 square feet, there's no variance asked for the lot size. It just seems like it's a reasonable use of the property. They've got the wetlands restrictions that have been highlighted by the applicant, in the area that cannot be invaded, that will be preserved, and all things considered, I, I think we've got a sufficient hardship to grant this application.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I've got a few things.
Mr. Wall?
My initial thoughts were that the house is, is close to the property line, and that the driveway would be within, almost reaching distance to the, to the house there, but the house, as was pointed out from the GIS, is set back 11 feet from the property line. So, you know, I brought that up in the informal session, I think that, that's been, satisfied in my mind. It would be nice to have a, some kind of a landscaping strip between the, the driveway and the property line, such that the driveway isn't all the way up against the property line. And I think that Mrs. Jackson brought up the, the point about the driveway, you know, being close to the house, and I think that Mr. Burdon brought up that it, you know, is certainly, okay, all right. And, but I, I do feel the justification for variance is, is appropriate. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Brockwell?
I'll just say, you know, I think you were there this morning, we had a lot of discussion about, about the hardship aspect of that. I mean, that really is the key element to this. You know, for me, there's two things I'm thinking about in relation to it, and land use is one of them, and precedent is the other, which you mentioned, Mr. Burdon. And for me, I think the land use for this piece of property was always intended for this. You know, there's a long history on this taking of this right-of-way, so that, for me, puts some question into the discussion about the hardship aspect for the current owner, but I do think it's consistent with what would have always been the land use. And I think because of the pretty specific geometric considerations, it's, it's not of a general nature to set any, any type of precedent, so I very much appreciate all the observations and questions, but I'm, I'm inclined to support this as well.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Burdon?
Just, you may, you certainly may want to add a condition that mirrors what I'd indicated, that we will plant a row of evergreens on our property between the shared boundary with the property to the west and the driveway, because that's not in, in your conditions, and we're more than happy to do that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Enman?
I'll make a motion to approve the application, subject to the additional condition that the row of evergreens be installed by the applicant, the property owner, between, I'm trying to find the lot, I said lot...
Two.
Uh, two, lot three.
Three.
Uh, and the adjacent property on the corner of Mill Dam Road and Palmetto Avenue.
Well, no, it would really be lot two, the driveway of lot two.
Lot three.
Well, it's the driveway that's on lot three.
Lot two, you're right.
But it belongs to lot two.
That's, Mr. Enman is correct. It is on lot three with an easement serving lot two, but it is on lot...
Correct.
Motion made by Commissioner Enman with the addition of the condition for the planning of the address. Second made by Commissioner Bob Thornton. Mr. Whedon, we're ready to vote.
Vote is up. I'm over 11-0, the adjutant is to do the application of Lena Mercer, the additional condition of plan.
Thank you. It's barely 1 o'clock, and I can't believe I'm getting ready to say this, but on behalf of my fellow commissioners, I'd like to thank... I'm sorry?
No, we had a bet, so I lost.
Oh. I'd like to thank all of our, all the commissioners for today's hearing, and thank staff for all their hard work, and enjoy the rest of the beautiful day in November. I'm leaving you, gentlemen.